Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting. And we're going to move on to number or here, item number 35, which is a briefing. Up next, our crime statistics briefing.
Good afternoon, Mike Markle, Police Department. Thank you for skipping the Fire Department, I appreciate that. Makes us feel special. Today's briefing is going to be follow-up to some of your questions. I invite lots of questions. Remember, your Police Department tracks thousands of points of intersecting crime data, so for us to barrage you with open numbers would be probably confusing and not leave you in a good place, right? So I, you'll receive general numbers, and I encourage you, district-wise, if you have questions about nuances of your district, and what crimes you want to know about, or anything you're interested in, please, I invite you to ask as many questions as you as you feel necessary or want to be curious about. Our primary presentation will be Chief Todd Green and his Deputy Chief Billy Breedlove, followed by Deputy Chief Hollis Bowers over Narcotics Vice. And our Gang Unit Captain is here, Captain Moore. And presenting will be the one and only Austin Yoehk, who is a wonderful example of our Gang Unit and Special Task Force Officer. So ask away, enjoy your officers, and please be inquisitive. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Todd Green, Assistant Chief of the Investigations Bureau at the Police Department. Thank you, Counsel, for having us back to talk about some of the crime data updates from last meeting, as well as some of the more recent crime reduction initiatives and programs we got going at the Police Department. Today's presentation will cover crime rates by each individual Council District. We have a comparison of Corpus Christi crime rates to other cities of similar population across the United States. We have some information on crimes by and against homeless, the homeless population, crime prevention programs, narcotics crimes, and gangs and gang-related crime. So this first slide shows violent crime rates by Council Districts per 10,000 people. And we went back five years and looked at five years' worth of data, and the violent crime, these are the numbers that we report yearly to the FBI that compile or comprise the Uniform Crime Report. So these are official numbers that we, we send to the FBI on a yearly basis. And that violent crime includes murder, rape, and aggravated assault. So looking at this table over a period of five years, every, four out of the five Council Districts experienced a reduction in violent crime. All but one District, District Two, saw a slight increase in violent crime from 105 in 2020 to 112 in 2024. And that is, again, that's the number per 10,000 population. Next. The reason, the reason we use the number 10,000, per 10,000, generally when you see crime stats across the country, it's usually per 100,000. But since we're looking at each individual Council District, and there is no Council District that has over 100,000 population, we broke it down into per 10,000 to be able to show a, a good comparison across districts. So this next slide is the property crime rate by District, again, over five years. That includes, property crime includes burglary, larceny, larceny which is shoplifting, burglaries of motor vehicles, and those types of thefts, and then motor vehicle theft. Again, each, or four out of the five districts saw a reduction in property crime from 2020 to 2024. District Two had a very slight increase from 355 to 358. This next slide is, shows the 2023 violent crime rates, a comparison of Corpus Christi's violent crime rate to 18 other cities of similar population across the United States. And as you can see, at the bottom of the slide, it shows where Corpus Christi ranks in comparison to those other cities. Violent crime, overall violent crime, we are number eight. Murder rate, we are 13th. Rape, we are 13th. Robbery, we are 14th. And aggravated assault, we are 7th out of those 19 total cities. Next, please. So the next slide shows our property crime rate, 2023 property crime rate, Corpus Christi's property crime rate in comparison to those same 18 cities across the country. And overall property crime, we are number 12. Burglary, number 10. Larceny, which again, is your thefts, your minor thefts, and thefts from motor vehicles, we're number eight. And UUMV, which is motor vehicle theft, we are 17th out of, out of the 19 cities. We have a very effective and active auto theft task force here in Corpus Christi that work, they work very hard to keep the numbers down, and they're doing a very good job doing that, and you can see that the numbers reflect that. One thing I would caution anybody that uses this data to compare Corpus Christi to other cities is, although we're similar populations, there's no city on this list that is identical to Corpus Christi. Every one of these cities has different, different makeups and different factors that impact their crime rate. For example, if you look at column three, it shows how many sworn officers those police departments employ. And if you would notice, Corpus Christi, in 2023, we were at approximately 458, I think we're a little bit higher than that, we were at 466 roughly. If you look at the city right below that, Cincinnati, their sworn strength was 916 sworn officers, and their population was approximately 5,000 less than us. So that, that certainly has a big impact on, on the differences. When you, when you're looking at cities, you've got to consider some of these things. Many of these cities have a Sheriff's Department that also provides law enforcement services within their city limits. Corpus Christi does not. The Oasis County Law Enforcement, they, they perform their law enforcement duties primarily outside the city limits for the, for the vast majority. The other, other factors to consider are the geographic size of the city. Corpus Christi has a pretty large geographical area for the Police Department to cover. It's laid out very, like a, like a, in a crescent, as opposed to many cities are more of a circular area. And of course, when you have that crescent, it makes it harder to move police resources across from one end of the city to the other. Obviously, for us, it, it's very uncommon for an officer that works out in the Calle Island area, or someplace like that, to make a call on Padre Island. It would take, you know, half an hour for them just to get there. So it does present some of those problems. Other things to consider with these different cities is, what is their prosecutor, prosecutor's office like, their District Attorney? How aggressive are they on crime? How well-staffed are they? Currently, our Oasis County District Attorney's Office is approximately 12 prosecutors short of full staffing. And just like any organization, our, our organization included, if we're shorthanded, it makes it harder for us to deliver, deliver our services. And they certainly do a good job there, at the District Attorney's Office with what they have, but they are certainly hamstrung by a lack of, of enough prosecutors. And then the court, course, court system enters into it as well. Are there enough courts? Are there enough judges to handle the amount of crime that, or the amount of cases that we push to the prosecutors, who in turn, there have to be courts in order to handle all of that? Jail capacity is another issue. These jurisdictions, do they have jail capacity large enough to keep people in jail when we arrest them, when we find them committing crimes until their trial date? Or do they have to release them on a constant basis because they have to keep the jail from over, being overpopulated? That's an issue that we experience here in Oasis County. The jail is frequently either at or near capacity, and decisions have to be made about letting people go on bonds, who many times go right back out on the street and reoffend. And then prison capacity as well, that's, you know, if, if we do make it through the court system, through the process, and they're convicted, is there capacity in the, in the prison system? And to make them serve their full sentence, or are they getting out, you know, with, with shortened sentences very quickly because of lack of prison space? And then lastly, socio-economic factors, you know, some of these cities on this list, I think are pretty high, high-income suburbs of large metropolitan areas, they're not a standalone city like Corpus Christi. So there's, there's many factors there that impact crime rates. With that being said, we still do a very good job. Our crime rates may be a little bit higher in comparison to some of these cities, but we do an excellent job with our clearance rates. The national, the national clearance rate for homicide has fallen steadily over the years from the, well, in the last few years, it was in the mid-60s. The most recent data that I could find, it had fallen to 58% clearance rate. That means a homicide, some person that commits a murder, 58% chance that they get arrested, that somebody is arrested for that crime. That's nationwide. Our clearance rate for homicide over the past five years is 95%. We have some outstanding detectives, we have really good patrol officers, we have an outstanding crime scene unit that all work together to impact those clearance rates, excuse me. Our sexual assault clearance rate is 30%, where the nationwide average is 27. Our clearance rate for robbery is 29%, the national average is 27. Our aggravated assault clearance rate is 39%. The national average is a little higher, at 46. So we know we have some work to do there, and there's several initiatives that we have in place to impact that. Looking at property crimes, excuse me, the, our clearance rate is 13% for burglaries. Nationwide, it's 14. For larceny, overall larceny, our clearance rate is 22%. And nationwide, it's only 15%. So we're 7% over the national average when it comes to clearance rates. And then for motor vehicle theft, our clearance rate is 16%, and the national average is only 8%. So we're double that national average, and I think that, there again, that speaks to how good our auto theft task force is, and of course, the patrol officers and the officers that work the streets. So that's some pretty, pretty good numbers there. So this next slide is a quick snapshot of homeless crime. We were asked about homeless crime, I think, in the last council meeting, and how does that, what do our numbers look like for homeless crimes involving homeless people? So we only went back two years, and if you look, the, the table on the left is offenders, so that's homeless individuals that were arrested for various offenses. I think when you look at the, get to the bottom of the slide, you can see, or that table, it, it, most of the crimes that the homeless are arrested for are the nuisance crimes, the quality-of-life crimes, certainly that are very important to our community. But public intoxication, criminal trespass, drug possession, and warrants of arrest, which frequently are warrants that come out because they were arrested, and then they fail to show up for their court date, so there's a warrant issued for them to, to be rearrested. The second table is the homeless victims, and because they are a vulnerable population out on the street, they, they are easy targets many times for, for people that commit sexual assaults or aggravated assaults against them. Larceny, even though they, they may not have much, they, they are victims of theft, just like anybody else that lives in a house. So these numbers, just to let you know real quickly how we got these numbers, homelessness is not a crime, so we don't track it necessarily. Obviously, we can't arrest somebody from being homeless. And we generally, when we respond to a call, we don't ask people, "Are you homeless?" It's not part of our protocol. The only time we would generally do that is if we're trying to get somebody some services, and we, we may ask them, "Hey, if you're homeless, we have some great people, we have a homeless resource officer on our department." We may ask them, "Hey, are you homeless? Can we help you? Can we get you in touch with the homeless resource officer, maybe get you into some housing, get you some food, some clothing, some medical care, mental health care, whatever it is?" So we don't generally ask them, and we don't have a system to really record that. So this data that we were able to pull out of our computer system, our record system, was specifically if, when they were either arrested, or they were a victim, if they used an address of one of our local homeless shelters, then we were able to go in and pull that out, and we recognized, well, if you're using an address of a homeless shelter, you're probably homeless. But many, many times, that's not the case. They use an old address, they have ID with their, their prior home address, so we don't know. I would guess that these numbers are probably maybe three times as high, just looking at them, as wide as here. But we did the best we could to try to pull the data out of the, out of the system, if that makes sense. Excellent. So one of the things that we do in order to try to maximize our effectiveness and our local impact is we work closely with a number of federal, state, and local law enforcement and service organizations, and we have good relationships with these, these agencies, these organizations, and we use it to, like I said, to multiply our impact in, on local crime. If you would notice, the, for the federal, on the, on the left side of the column, out of the federal agencies, we have Corpus Christi police officers that are assigned or embedded, actually, with these various law enforcement agencies. They work right alongside with the federal partners, and they work, they're able to maximize, they're able to use federal resources on local crime, targeting local crime, local criminals. We're able to get local, local crimes filed into the federal system, which the federal system generally is much more, if there's a conviction, the, the sentences are much longer, they're much more impactful. And then just to be able to use all the resources that the federal government has, the federal law enforcement agencies, the databases, the resources, the equipment, the intelligence analysts, all the things that the federal government can help us with. So, so that's a great, a great benefit, and, and we make sure that when we're doing this, we're looking at local crime, local criminals. This is not, we're not giving them to the federal agencies to go work, you know, cases outside the city limits. It's very, very specific about targeting local crime. This next slide shows some of the many crime, crime reduction units that we have here in the Police Department, and several of the many initiatives that either the Police Department totally supports, or that we are members of, or we take part in. So the, the column on the left is the, the units within our Police Department. It's not comprehensive, there's still, I probably left a few things out, but these are some of the more important ones that we, that we use that are directed specifically towards different types of crime. You see the bike unit, the enduro unit, the gang unit, which you'll be hearing a presentation on later in this presentation. The one, there's two units in particular I'd like to talk about real quickly before I wrap up and turn it over to Deputy Chief Bowers, and that's the violent crime unit, and our NIBIN unit, or Gun Trace Unit. The violent crime unit was put together last November after the Department and specifically Chief Markle recognized there was a definite increase in violent crime with young individuals between 16, 24, that were engaging in, consistently engaging in violent gun-related crime, firearms-related crime. And it seemed like there was a growing pattern, so this unit was formed to, specifically to address that issue. A total of 13 officers from various units in the Department were permanently reassigned to this unit. And its task, the unit's tasked with reducing all violent crime, but especially violent, gun crime, gun crimes. They use a variety of tactics to accomplish their goal, which include high-visibility sweeps of known high-crime areas, bar inspections, traffic enforcement, increased traffic enforcement at night, and on the freeways, and you've probably seen some stories about the reckless drivers that they're, they're taken off the street every weekend, basically. And they're finding weapons on these people. They do surveillance of known violent offenders. They monitor social media and conduct other proactive enforcement tactics. Social media is kind of the gang graffiti of 2020s now. There's a lot that you can, that you can learn, and you can find a lot, a lot out about people as opposed to back in the 90s, when, when I was out there, it was on the, it was on the walls. Well, now it's on phones, it's on cell phones. So the violent crime unit embraces intelligence-led policing. They collaborate with our crime analysts and are, comb through numerous CCPD databases and platforms to identify violent crime hotspots and offenders. So they go after both the hot, the areas where they recognize there's an increase in, in violent gun crime, and then they also identify the offenders, especially, you know, repeat offenders, and we come at them from different directions. We try to go after the offenders when we go off, after the hotspots. The violent crime unit officers then work closely with our CID, with our gang unit, our Narcotics and Vice Investigations Division, and, you know, like I said, they go out and target those hotspots and those offenders. Just since November, they've been very effective in doing this, and they've made 96 gang contacts, they've conducted 2,643 investigations, they've made 244 felony arrests, 268 misdemeanor arrests, and probably the most important statistic, they've taken 93 firearms away from potentially violent offenders and, and off of, known violent offenders, just in that time period. They've been very, very successful unit, and they're, they're very, very good, very good investigators and enforcement people. The next, the, the last unit that I wanted to speak of is our NIBIN unit, or Gun Trace Unit, it may make more sense. NIBIN is the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, and it is a database that's run by the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Bureau. And what that database does is, anytime there's a gun-related or, yeah, gun-related crime, we enter the bullet casings or weapons that we recover, we enter into that system, and that system is able to connect various violent crimes to, you know, to that particular gun, and eventually, hopefully, to, to the offender. So our, we have two detectives that are assigned to ATF, and that is their, that is their mission. They work alongside our forensic firearms examiner, we have two of those in the Police Department. So when we receive casings or we receive a weapon, they run that through the NIBIN system, and they look for comparisons, and they match it up. And it's, it's fascinating how many times, when we recover a weapon from somebody, we find out, they do a test firing, and we find out that gun's been involved in a drive-by shooting, an aggravated assault, shots fired calls, three, four, or five different times within a period of a year or so. So these detectives take that information, and then again, they work with our violent crime unit, they work with our detectives, they work with our narcotics officers, whatever it takes to go out and file charges and find those people and, and file charges on them, recover more weapons if we can, and move forward with that. And just to, to wrap up my, my portion of it, just to show how successful this initiative, these two initiatives, and overall, the, the emphasis on violent gun crime, year-to-date, as of today, we have seen a 16% decrease in aggravated assaults so far this year. So it's impactful, what we're doing out there, and probably the most important thing to note is, we wouldn't have been able to do all this if it hadn't have been for the City Council and the City Mayor, City Manager and the Mayor giving us the additional officers to go out there and, and do these types of things, and do, and go out there and go after these criminals. We just did not have the personnel. Five, six years ago, we couldn't have created this unit without severely impacting somewhere else. Somebody else would have had to really suffer. But because of the additional officers that, that the Council has provided us, these are the things that we're able to do. And at that point, I am, before I turn it over to Deputy Chief Bowers, I will, available for questions?
Okay. Oops. Okay, no, there you go. Thank you. Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. There's a lot of really great details in there. I know we all are impacted by this to one degree or another in our district. I just had a couple of points I was curious about. In your last slide, there was reference to a homeless weekly outreach coalition. Could you tell me a little bit about that?
I'm, I'm not incredibly well-versed on that, but it's, it's a coalition that I believe our homeless resource officer attends, and it's, James, yeah? It's, it's not exact, it's not ours. Our homeless, our homeless resource officer attends this, and it's, like it says, it's a weekly meeting to, you know, identify homeless people, and, you got it?
Yeah. Let me just, just kind of, yeah. How y'all doing? Deputy James, James Lorma, Corpus Christi Police Department, Operations Division. And I'm able to speak on this because they worked for me for a short period of time. What it is, is the, they meet weekly with some of the area, area resources, just to make sure that everything's up to speed, is there anything that, that they need, areas where they could help the homeless people and get them resources. They meet, they, we, excuse me, they meet weekly at the La Rotama Library, and it's just about resources. How can they get the resources to the people that need it, basically?
I know there's been so much discussion, you know, in this first part of the year about homeless services. We've seen a lot of new support from this council initially to reevaluate, putting some resources in our budget to help with this. And I've seen there's been several occasions where questions have been raised about possibly bringing together the different entities for a coalition-type setting to tackle this issue successfully. So I was curious to see that there is already something in place. So is it, do we have a standing representative of all of our major groups, or who calls this meeting together? this meeting together? Is there some structure to it that we take away from? And forgive me if these are elementary questions, but I wasn't aware that they were still meeting, so.
They are still meeting, and it's a, it's a, it's a foundation for future growth, and it's, they meet weekly, like I said, and it's basically to tackle the needs of the homeless population. They, what can we do as a police department? Like you said, there are limited resources there. But we're doing the best that we can with what we have, to make sure that the homeless population gets the resources, whether it's blankets, whether it's some type of meal, where can they go for meals, whether it's Mother Teresa, whether it's the Salvation Army. We want to make sure that all those places are still available for our homeless population. And so when we go out there, and our homeless resource officer gets out there, or our patrol officer on the street goes out there, we have the necessary resources and the information to give those people, and to make sure that those places are still available. So we meet on a weekly basis to make sure that that's available to them. So if there's a need, we want to make sure that we address it. If there's something we can do as a police department to help those things move forward, we want to make sure that we do that, so.
Is this by chance, is this at all related to, at one time, there was a committee on, I think it was homelessness, drug abuse, alcohol abuse. It pretty much died off in 2019, before COVID, because they had come to what they thought was like their culmination idea, which was this tiny homes philosophy, you know, community, build people back up on their feet, that kind of thing. But there was no consensus of where we could establish such a concept, and the group kind of, to my understanding, had disbanded. So is this an offspring of that, or is this a separate foundation?
Councilwoman, can I, I have the answer to the question, so, yeah. The former housing unit that we had, it was a three-member group before we had to balance the budget last year. That group started this, this group that meets at the library. So the city homelessness division started these meetings. They do take place once a week, as Lerner said. And the service providers, there's about 10 groups that meet still today. The police department represents the city at the meetings. So there's 10 service groups, approximately entities like MHID, Coastal Bend Wellness, and probably some of the main homeless shelter providers meet, and then they go out into the field to, you know, to address the issues that are, that the team at the meetings become aware of because of the collective work.
If it was initiated by the city, is it still being driven by the city? Are we the key liaison?
I don't think we're the key liaison. I think it's, for the police side of it, we all recognize that, number one, you can't broad-brush-stroke the homeless, right? There's, there's mental illness, there's addiction, there's those that just don't want to live within social constraints, it's by choice. So we recognize that, and we make ourselves part of every initiative. Recently, we've come into an agreement with dismissed charities as a drop-off point. One thing we recognize is, is that we don't want to send homeless to the revolving door of the jail, although that's the primary place to receive services, unfortunately. So we, we work on agreements, we work with crisis intervention officers, we have many officers trained that work off-duty and are paid through MHID, through the hospital tax, to ride with, or work with MHID workers, to find resources. We, suffice to say, we understand the big picture, that we're not the end-all, it takes a group effort, and yes ma'am, some things come together and disband, but they never go away. We're always working as a collective to find the best way forward for our homeless population.
I know at that time, in 2019, and I have some history, because I served on it for some time.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that we had recognized was, we had one entity locally that served as the coordinated entry point. But with the constraints, and all of the hoops that had to be jumped, once you were declared that coordinated entry point, it was not a job that people were lined up at the door to do.
No, and they disbanded quickly, don't they? We tried it with pathways, lasted one day, till we started dropping folks off. Great intentions, but now dismissed charities have stepped up. You have places like Rising Tides and Flower Bluff. We try to connect as many entities, or be part of as many entities as necessary, because we, we are usually the first contact with someone in need.
And I applaud, in recent years, certainly, it was a huge conversation piece then, was the continued education that our police department was pursuing to be able to de-escalate and properly handle the situations, because they are so multifaceted.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this meeting, previously, it was open to any sort of organization. At the time, we had roughly 44 different homeless service organizations that provided all the different services. You said there's about 10 groups represented now. Is it open to other groups, or invitation?
I don't know, honestly, I think.
I have the answer, so, it's not that.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying.
I'm getting it here from Jennifer Buxton, you know, she's communicating with us. So, that former, that former group that was here when I first got here, about six years ago, and I think their meetings were monthly, and it was, it was 30 to 40 service providers, and they met, and there was, you know, I think the city may have helped to, or at least offered the space, I don't know if we ran the agenda. So this new group is pretty new, it's more, Jennifer describes it as more of an organic grouping, so anybody can come to the meeting, and it's really, it's to set a work plan for the day, or for the week. And so people come in, like PD, like MHID, others come in and just kind of talk as a group, about what are the issues we see out there, and then how do we address them, and then they just go out. So it's very organic, it's not structured, that's why it's still.
It's a volunteer.
Yeah, it's a volunteer, that's why it's still happening today, even though the city's not there as a lead person, except for.
Do we have a method of communication to them? Like, back then, it was an organized committee, and so we had, you know.
Yeah, this one's different from that group.
It's a little different. Okay. I would love if you guys would share some of that meeting date and time, I know you said La Ratama, once a week. I would love to hear more about that, something that's very, I'm very passionate about, I feel like I've studied over the years a lot, and worked in this capacity. So I'd really love some more information on these meetings.
Sure, happy to get back with you, James will follow up, get you some contact information. Again, our goal is to be as accessible, I know that Peter says it's not a city representation, but there is.
You guys are there.
Through the entire police department.
Police department's one of the 10 participants or so. It's very, it's less of a meeting, as Jennifer's saying, and more just a collaboration.
Sure.
It's an organic collaboration, people that want to help out come in and say, what are we going to do today, or this week, and then they go do it.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's no direction.
You know, if you've already got a thread, don't start from ground zero, if you've got something going, and you're wanting to come and support it, and I'm glad to hear that's there. So thank you for everybody's information.
That was set up prior.
Yeah, Peter, if you would, or, I'm sorry, Chief Markle, or whomever is going to send it, I think it's an interest, excuse me, an interest for all of us, being that we don't necessarily have a, or we don't have a homeless department, to see that information, so you send it to everyone.
James is going to find it, and get it together, and we'll send it.
Yeah, we do, if I could, Mayor, and Councilwoman Paxton, when we recommended to balance the budget, the elimination, we just couldn't afford it. But we recognize several departments would pick up the slack, so to speak, that included the police department, who already was in the homeless business a little bit. Also included our emergency management coordinator, so Jace is a very big, even when conditions are fine out there, if somebody wants information on homelessness, or to donate something, Jace is an everyday contact. Our health district has some homelessness services, so we didn't completely eliminate all homelessness. We had those departments that were doing it alongside that three-member group, continuing to do it, but just.
Does Jace go to that group?
Yeah.
I don't mean to get off on homeless too much here, but does Jace go to that group?
No, Jace does not go to that group.
Okay, probably should, probably be a good idea.
He doesn't go out in the field, you know, so this group goes out into the field, like the police department, Jace is not equipped to go out in the field and do referral services to homelessness, he should be back at the.
Well, what I was getting at with, and I think the mayor's touching on this also, what I was, part of my question, thought process, was being able to communicate, since we're having such regular meetings, like, hey, we've got a severe heat weather coming up, a severe freeze weather coming up, here's the resources, here's the city plan, transportation, that kind of thing, which I'd assume is coming from Jace's office, probably via PD.
He would probably go to, yeah, he, or somebody would represent that probably, and it's a little organic consortium, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Then I just had one more quick question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Another thing that we hear a lot is from our crime control board. There's been a few members that come before us, and they're very interested in adding to all the great services that this department, PD, provides by continuing to expound upon and investigate, you know, more creative-type situations where we're preventing crime. Has there been, and I believe the crime control board works very closely with you guys, what we're hearing is basically that there's ideas being brought up, and so I'm curious if any of those have been evaluated, or looked at, or what kind of efforts we may have in place to pursue some of those more non-traditional avenues for crime prevention? All the fun questions, you said be creative.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. There's been no formal presentation of ideas. Again, and I have to qualify this, I'm not anti-program, we're not anti-program. There was just a decision made a few years ago to overstaff our crime control with 78 officers, that absorbs, we dip into the fund balance, right? We do deficit spending in crime control, until such time as they can be moved into general fund. So there's just not capacity, it's not an issue of not wanting programs. Now, we should understand, much of the list on the left here, presented by Chief Green, were programs in crime control absorbed by the PD.
I recognize a lot of those are already in the prevention realm.
They were, they were the original programs in the crime control district, we absorbed those within the PD. So they haven't gone away, except for two programs, I believe, and one, one was involving truancy, and that's, that's not against the law any longer, so, it's not a relevant program, so.
So for us, if we're getting a lot of calls, and emails, and messages from members of crime control, saying we like, what, could we expound on this idea, that idea, whatever? So for you guys, it would be, it would make more sense to have like a formal presentation, or a formal request?
Sure, programs have budgets, and they have, you know, you want to have measurable outcomes, you want to have a program that is, you know, modeled already and understood.
Sure.
We haven't seen that yet, and, but I guess I'm qualifying that with, even if we see it right now, we don't have capacity to pay for it out of crime control.
Unless it were something completely, you know, as, you know, a completely non-orthodox type idea, where it's not, it's not incumbent on a huge budget constraint, perhaps it's a different collaboration.
If it doesn't involve a budget, then, of course, but.
I find systemically, when we've got an organization that's operating, you know, very efficiently, and very well, and then you've got kind of like these great ideas, and if they don't, there's a, there's a communication usually component that's missing, so that's what I wanted to ask there.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate the question.
Thank you, guys.
Councilwoman Gumples?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that great presentation, Chief Green. I had a couple of questions that were submitted to me. One, one was, and like you, like Chief Markle said, that a lot of those components were observed, how should I say, absorbed by your department, as far as in the prevention part. So how does your, the question is, what does your department use to assess the effectiveness of the program, unit, or initiative? Like, for each program, how do you assess that you're doing, that you've improved, or things are working? What do you use for that?
Well, we use crime data all the time, and that's something that, on a daily basis, that we, we have crime data that we evaluate, we look at, see where we're being effective. As I mentioned earlier, the violent crime unit was created in response to an uptick in crime among a certain age group, and a certain time of the day, and day of the week. So we used all those statistics to determine that we needed to put more officers out there on the street during those high-crime times, and go after that particular problem. And then we constantly evaluate to see if we're being, if they're being effective through the crime data that we get. And like I said, for example, so far this year, aggravated assaults have gone down by 16%, and so we reevaluate when we're looking at those things.
Okay. Well, because I, like you had noted, that District 2, that some of the crime had gone up, so I'm just wondering what it is that y'all were doing differently, and mine, and not mine, well, you know, my district that I represent in District 2, versus some of the other districts, that their crime rates are going down. So that's what, one of the reasons.
Exactly, exactly. And in fact, we have a program on District 2 that specifically targets violent crime. We use our crime data, our analysts, and what they, what they showed us on District 2 was the majority of violent crime that we were seeing was in a small area in and around the La Armada housing complex. So they create, we created a program, it's called the Delta 80 Initiative. It is a program strictly within the police department, well, I take that back. So the officers that work Delta 80, which is the beat, that particular beat on District 2, they have an intel-sharing group email where they share intelligence, they've reached out to the management at La Armada, as well as several of the surrounding businesses surrounding that area, where we were seeing an uptick in crime. They have, they're working with the management to identify the people that don't belong there, the people that are coming from the outside and committing crime. They are working with the housing authority as well, to identify the problem tenants, and if they are violating their lease, or whatever, whatever it may be, they're working to have them evicted. And it's surrounding that, that area, so.
And how long has that, Delta 8, been?
Delta 80? It started in January of this year.
Oh, okay.
So, it was an example, like I said, of the captain that isn't responsible for that, for that district, which falls on your council district, using our crime analysis, using our data, and putting our resources where we feel like it'll have the most impact, instead of just spreading them out across the entire district, where we don't see necessarily a big individual increase. That area right around there was where we were seeing it.
Yes, there is a need, only because another organization that I'm employed by, which is For the Greater Good, they have a program at La Armada, addressing some of the children that live there. But what had happened is, they've got the summer program there, but then La Armada started cracking down on the actual addresses, because there was a big need for, for, kind of like, you know, summer work program, not work, but a summer program to get them, you know, engaged, and keep them engaged. But then La Armada said, well, you know, these kids, some of these kids don't even live here, you know, they live around there, so then it reduced it very much so. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but, you know, I'm just saying that, yes, it can't just be La Armada, it needs to be addressed around the other area. But, okay, so, and then the other part of it, of that question was, for example, how is the Operation Safe Return assessed with regard to safety, crime, and prevention?
Hi, I'll step in for just a moment. Good afternoon, Billy Breedlove, Deputy Chief, Criminal Investigation Division. So just go back to your part.
Yes.
First question was about measurables, so one of the things we can measure is our pawn shop detail, that was one of the programs absorbed by the department from original crime control. And so we look at hundreds and thousands of dollars that they recover each year of stolen property, and we track that, and we're able to return that to the victims, so that's one of the measurables. The other is our directed patrol officers, which we're very familiar with, and they operate off of a problem-solving approach to policing. There's a problem in a neighborhood, and they look at the holistic approach to it, whether we've got to bring in code enforcement, or other, you know, partners that we have in the city to address the overarching problem. And we see the absence of that problem, and the citizens, like, we saw that problem, we move on to the next one. Crime can be a little different to measure, because, you know, it's difficult to say, we're going to take one, you know, effect out of the equation, and say, we've been successful, there's just so, there's so many nuances to fighting crime, and impacting crime. But what we can use is probabilities, and things where we know if we do this type of enforcement action, and we see a reduction, then we can pretty much say, more likely than not, we've had an impact on that. And so then your follow-up question, if you could.
Oh, was, how is the Operation Safe Return assessed with regard to safety, crime, and prevention?
So what we're looking at that is the amount of kids that we service, that we provide to, and it's not just handing out backpacks, we also have doctors there that can perform physicals, we have people volunteering to give haircuts, and it's just a great way to get kids ready for the school year. And then, again, it's hard to measure the impacts that we've had with those children when they're up, giving the police officers hugs, and what that does down the road for them. You know, we see them later, and so they remember coming to Operation Safe Return, and just building that partnership, and it's hard to measure that.
Yeah, no, and I do see that. So is. So is that part, like, do we, as a, as your department, buy those items for them?
No, it's all, there's, there are literally dozens of our community business members that pony up all the funds for that, every, every bit of it. Now, that services 3,500 to 4,000.
Yeah.
Backpacks, school physicals, sports, haircuts, shots, and almost, and it's not just PD now, it's, it's most of your departments within the city, they volunteer. You know, parks are over there, your health department's over there. So remember, a core function, a core tenet of crime prevention is community interaction.
Yeah.
It's not just measuring how many criminals you take off the street.
I agree.
It's CC PAL, it's servicing 3,000 kids with structured sports in the summertime. We do that through a 501(c)(3) also, with our, with our partners around this, industry partners, pay for all of it. Give them something to do, give them structure, give them sports.
Right.
OSR, Operation Safe Return, get them back to school, help them with those things that some families can't afford. Give them structure, give them mobility, give them interaction with the Police Department, let them know the community cares about them.
Yeah. Especially during the summertime, yeah.
Interaction is a core component of prevention, especially catching them at the youth, while they're youth, right? So it's, it's not immeasurable, you can't, you can't measure what you, what you prevent, right? But it is part of crime prevention.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Chief. I also wanted to just touch, let's see, there was something else, on the calls, and I think we touched on that, because, like I said, you know, we can't police ourselves out of it, but I think we can agree that about 20% of the calls that are, that y'all experience are mental health.
Probably 25. The sheriff will say 25% of his jail space is occupied by mentally ill.
And so are we trying or trying to do anything different to?
Yes, as I just, as I just expressed, up, working with services like dismiss charities or direct drop-offs are not arrestable, we drop them off, try to get them services. We don't want to arrest folks and then rearrest them because they didn't, they have a warrant based on the first arrest, that's ridiculous. We understand that. Sometimes it's our only alternative, right? Sometimes they're trespassing all day long, sometimes they're, they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing and disrupting business and disrupting, right? I mean, the common good plays a part, too. We're obligated to take care of that, so. But I assure you, it is not our objective to arrest homeless. It's not our objective to keep them constantly in the pipeline of the criminal justice system.
No, and I.
So when we have an opportunity to bring them to a charitable organization, find resources, that is what we do.
And, and one of the things experiencing or getting, calling on, or trying to help the homeless is ID, you know, right? ID is like a huge identification, them losing their identification, they can't get a job, they can't get an apartment, you know? So I think I had mentioned this to Officer Brown, you know, on the Little Card Index Help Self-Help Card Guide, I don't know who's responsible for renewing that or doing that, but I think that would be a big asset. So if they, you know, the homeless population can find out that dismiss is, I believe, one of the organizations that can help them with, with that issue, that would be.
Rising Tide also does that, and I think so does Metro Ministry.
Okay. So just to publicize it and say, this is where you can get it and, and that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Vaughn. Mine's going to be really quick. First off, I want to thank you, Chief Markle, for bringing all the different divisions. That's very helpful. And the other thing is, I was watching the channels all over the country this weekend and saw all the protests, and I thought about our city. A lot of it had to do with the people that were marching, they were very orderly, I think, overall, but I think the most of it has to do with the Police Department. They know it's not going to be put up with. These other cities, you look at them and you see, they have no control at all. But I believe our citizens know, I think you've set that example, we're not going to put up with it. I also want to thank you on behalf of this entire council and the city manager for bringing order back into our public comment, because having y'all's presence made all the difference up here on how the council takes public comment. It's more orderly and respectful, so thank you for that. The thing that I noticed was the violent crime was the highest in District One, which is my, that's where I live. So is there a certain area, is it, I don't want to call anything out, is there certain areas that spread? I've noticed that we've had more problems in Cali Island than normal. Can you talk about that?
So just like District Two, we looked, we looked at every district to see if there was a one particular, what we call hotspots, where we see a large amount of violent crime. On District One, it's, it's spread out a lot in, from the downtown area, and District One is a huge.
It is.
Geographic district, covers a lot of area, and it's very diverse. So you go from North Beach to the downtown area, you have nightclubs, you have bars in the downtown area, then you go all the way out, part of the west side, there's some at-risk neighborhoods over there where there's a high gang population, higher than other parts of the city, and then all the way out Leopard, all the way out to Cali Island, Anniville area out there, where we don't, you know, we don't see a particular area that is a hotspot in that part of the district. It's primarily more towards in town, like I said, off of Agnes, Leopard, and around Inare, and then the downtown areas where we have been experiencing more crime, just downtown in general. And of course, like I mentioned earlier, our violent crime unit, our gang unit are well aware of those areas, and we are focusing on those areas to drive crime down, and violent crime especially in those areas.
Okay, and it could be because it is so big, it's probably one of the biggest areas, I would think, one, one of the biggest districts compared to the others. You don't have to answer.
Yes, yeah, council, the, yeah, it goes, like I said, it goes all the way from North Beach all the way out up to 624, you know, it's, it's a very long district, and it's very diverse, you know?
Yes, because Gil's up here grinning.
We have a really heavy industrial area on Leopard where we see business burglaries and metal thefts, copper thefts, that's, that's a problem that we deal with on District One a lot.
Well, you had violent crime, too, so that was one of my biggest concerns, but Gil's up here grinning from ear to ear because his is the lowest, but it has nothing to do with him. Thank you all very much for what you do, has nothing to do with him. And I wanted to ask you about one other thing. What is Bears and Badges? It just caught my eye, the name of it.
That's another program that, that we take part in, it's handing out.
Bears?
Stuffed animals and things like that, and badges, it's, you know, the badges for young people, whatnot.
Okay, just curious, just struck out, and then the Red Cord?
Red Cord, that is an initiative that we partner with, with, we act, the Police Department, actually, Chief Simpson brought it from Dallas. It's a, it's an initiative that we partner with the Coastal Ben Wellness Foundation. And what it is, is when we, when our narcotics and vice investigators make prostitution cases, Red Cord is Coastal, Coastal Ben Wellness Foundation. So when we arrest a, somebody for prostitution, they are there with us. It's a program where if the individual wants to take part in the program, they are offered a multitude of resources, from job training, health, addiction therapy, whatever it is that seems to have caused that, that woman to engage in prostitution. So they have all these things available. And the way it works, the district attorney is part, a part of that process. So if the woman takes part of, and it's open to men, too, but primarily women, if the woman takes part in all, and goes through all this process prior to going to trial and makes it through, then the charge will be dismissed.
Okay.
And it's, it's really a tremendous program for, you know, trying to get women out of that horrible, horrible lifestyle.
It's not.
And usually, there's drugs that are involved, usually. So they, they offer all those resources, like I said, to help get that woman out of, out of that lifestyle.
Okay. You know, y'all have big shoes to fill, if you think about it. When you were a child, and I think it still goes on today, you wanted to be a fireman, you wanted to be a policeman, you wear your little cap, so you're role models, and I appreciate you, is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm, I'm looking at page number, yeah, page 10, on the drug delivery cases, and this is so concerning.
I was going to turn that over to Deputy Chief Bowers.
Come on up.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, but I think, actually, Councilman, your question may have been for him. You want to?
So yes, as you know, District One leads the way. But one of the things that I, and I'm not going to pick on or name recent cities that I've visited, but one of the things that I've noticed, and I was out on the west coast and then here local, you know, in Texas, is that when it comes to homeless, I've noticed in some cities that you actually see families out there panhandling or whatever, but you see children with, I'm assuming mother and father, but it's, you know, a family unit. I saw that really out on the west coast a lot. I mean, I saw an entire, it was amazing, like a huge parking lot that was converted where the school bus, there were so many homeless children there, or houseless, or whatever, that basically the school bus came there. I don't see that in our city. I haven't really seen that, maybe I'm just not, you know, maybe, but when I drive the district or I look around, I don't see that. So I just wondered if you see, if you observe on a regular basis families out there that is, as a whole unit, that are, you know, without a home?
I would say for the most part, it's rare. It is rare here, it does happen. I can tell you from my personal experience, when officers come across families that are truly homeless, that have lost their place to live, it's not unusual for our officers to go pay and put them up in a hotel for a few nights till they get a place to stay. And then that's why it's so important for us to know what resources are available for homeless people that we can direct them to, and we can reach out to, whether it's Salvation Army or the Good Samaritan, or whatever it is, and have a good working relationship with them, because we, we don't, we can't, we have no place to put them, we have to rely on the community to do those things. But it's rare, but it happens.
I think it's a, so part of that, what I was thinking is, I think it's a tribute to not only our, your staff, our police officers, but I also think it's a tribute also to the organizations that must open their doors and maintain that, because I'm sure there are families out there without homes. And so, but the fact that I don't see it, like I saw, it caught me off guard in other areas. So my other question is, right now, in terms of an ordinance, or in terms of, if somebody is, is it legal, is that, I guess the best question, if somebody is sleeping on the sidewalk overnight? I know like in Bleacher Park, when I was on council before, we looked at making some changes there, but is that an arrestable offense for somebody just sleeping out on the sidewalk or underneath a bridge or something like that overnight?
If they're camping, you know, if they have sleeping bags and all their gear and things like that, yes, it's a violation of the camping ordinance.
Well, yeah, plus, Councilman, we, I think in between the two terms, the city council passed an ordinance where you can't lay on the sidewalk and block the sidewalk, less than even camping, it's no laying or sleeping on the sidewalk, where public has to walk. So, yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered, I mean, because, you know.
Yeah, blocking, blocking a sidewalk, blocking, blocking an entranceway into a business, things like that, that's a violation.
I get a lot of phone calls, especially some of the businesses along Staples and that, unfortunately, that have people that don't respect their, their business entrances and do things that they shouldn't do. And so they're constantly having to clean up and that, and of course, you know, we've had some incidences where they've broke in, they've taken copper, or whatever the case is.
Sure.
And, and, you know, I was looking at the numbers, and I'm glad that we're not, they're not trending the other way, even though we are up a little bit in some areas, that we're not trending the other way.
Yes.
But I think you, I think, I've noticed an improvement. I mean, I look, when I first, in 2017, when I, some of the things that we did on North Beach and some of the things that we put in place in other areas within the district, I know has made a very positive impact. And I've, I've seen these other cities, and I'm thinking, wow, you think that's bad? Check out this city over here. And overall, I do think we have an issue, but I think we're fortunate. I think there's, we could be in a lot worse position when it comes to crime and, and just having the homeless people and things of that nature. But again, I want to thank each and every one of you, you guys are doing a great job. And, you know, of course, I know a lot of it's related to mental health, but, you know, I'm always surprised when I see somebody and I go, wow, that person, I saw that person. I, I see them all the time, but I would go back and I think, you know, they've been out there, at least what they appear to be homeless, for the last 10 or 11 years I can remember, you know, wow.
Yeah.
So it, it makes me wonder, you know, is that just, is that their preference?
Sure. And unfortunately, with many of them, that is their preference. We, we try to get them into shelters, we try to encourage them to get help, but they choose not to. And if they're not breaking the law, at that point, there's not a lot we can do about it.
Yeah, well, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. So yes, thank you, thank you for everything that y'all do, because it's, it's obviously expanded, like many occupations, it's expanded into more than, you know, not just, but policing. That said, you know, I think it's, I'm not going to say a slippery slope, but it is, we, we probably need to know what percentage of your day and work is being spent on, like this issue of homelessness, for example? Because I think it's important that if that number is growing, and you say to me or to us, you know, 20% of all of our time is being spent dealing with homeless people, trying to get them here or there, or, or whatever the case may be, just dealing with that, that's something that needs to be considered in terms of how we are, pardon? How, right, how's, how we are addressing or not the issue, or maybe not efficiently doing it, you know, just based on that. So I'd love to know what percentage of your time, and I don't know how you figure that out, but I'm sure y'all can get together and do that, is our police force spending on, on this issue? Secondly, let's see, well, I think I was going to go to the drug, to the page 10. The questions on drug delivery cases? You were going to call somebody up, right?
I'm going to give that for a second.
Oh, we're not there yet, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
I don't want to, I don't want to steal his thunder.
I'm sorry, I, I thought, how did I miss this? But, okay, well, then I'll, let's move, oh, Councilman Hernandez, and then, and then we'll move on, thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you. You know, I was joking with Councilwoman Vaughn about the crime statistics in District Five. I don't think it has much to do with superior council representation, but it definitely has to do with superior policing. And I appreciate the, the work that you guys do with the resources that you have and maximize them as best as possible. So no real comments, but just thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. With that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Hollis Bowers of the Narcotics and Vice Investigations Division.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Deputy Chief Hollis Bowers over the Narcotics Vice Division. And so what I want to do is give you hopefully a fairly brief overview of drug crimes that we're dealing with in our city, and we're doing a two-year comparison in what we're going through here. But I want you to understand a couple of things at first. So Chief Green talked about the Uniform Crime Report that the FBI puts out, that does not cover drug crimes. There is no state or national database for drug crimes, so there is no comparison to anyone else. What we have is the numbers that we keep for our own use, so we can know what crime trends are, so we can know what we need to target, but it's a little different numbers that we're looking at. And so when you look up here and see our numbers, you look at the total drug cases overall, pretty comparable between the two years, there's nothing to me, as somebody charges, that really stands out as a spike. There's going to be ebbs and flows in drug crimes. We have had as a city spikes that have been very significant. Pre-COVID, there was a huge spike in the, the synthetic, what the kids call legal, which was not legal, and we had a huge spike in that in our homeless population where we were having overdoses. And then. population, where we were having overdoses. And then in 2022, we had a spike in fentanyl. And so when you look at these, so I want to explain real quick, possession of controlled substances, these are users. So these are user numbers, meaning drug users. And these crimes are generally enforced by uniform patrol officers. So in the course of doing their duty, someone may chase drugs, or just during the course of handling other crimes, they're going to come across people in possession of drugs. And so that, this is generally their work. Uh, and so when we get to the next slide, Mayor, we'll get to our work and specifically your question. But we get, in Narcotics Vice, we're the ones who file all these cases and get, and get all of this. Everything comes through us. It's drug-related, regardless of who initiates it in the field. And so you'll see the grand total of arrests for, or drug cases for those two years, then below it, the number of arrests. The reason the numbers differ, it's not that we're letting drug people who are in possession of drugs go, it's because some people have multiple drugs, and that'll be separate cases. And so the arrest will be one arrest, but they may be charged with multiple possession cases. And so that's what you're seeing here. In 2022, we had fentanyl. Our penalty group, PG, stands for penalty group, I'm sorry, that's a state law, that's the terminology. PG, which is penalty group one, which is where you find methamphetamine, fentanyl, and cocaine. Methamphetamine, these are hardcore drug users, and methamphetamine is the number one really in use here locally. Fentanyl gets most of the attention. And in 2022, we started an investigation that ended up getting national attention, where we seized two pill presses out of a local group that was tied to the Mexican cartels. These pill presses had the ability of creating, of putting out 40,000 fentanyl pills per day, each. And we seized two of them. We ended up tying that group to 10 overdose deaths here locally. And so it was a big deal. And since that, that case took over a year, started before I got to Narcotics Vice, it finished while I was there. Uh, but it actually made a huge impact on fentanyl use in our city. And even though fentanyl is absolutely still here, and we've had, the DEA has confirmed two overdoses on fentanyl last year. They have a overdose response team. The city, us, have not run into a single fentanyl case since that big arrest. So it made a huge positive impact on the fentanyl in our city. It is absolutely still here. We don't, don't kid ourselves, but we're not seeing it nearly to the effect that we were before. THC products in penalty group two there, that is what you see our kids use the most. Vape pens, they are wax and edibles, and we see a lot of that. They operate differently than your hardcore drug dealers, even in the way when you find them dealing and stuff. You have a lot of social media investigations and stuff there for THC products. But that's sort of the trends between the two, and that's, marijuana is always a, a big issue. We don't really arrest much for possession of marijuana anymore. We have the process to issue the citations for that, which unless there's an additional crime at the time, if it's just the possession of marijuana, we will not arrest at the time. We'll issue them a citation to appear in court later. But possession of marijuana is never going to go away. Next. So here, manufacturing delivery, these are dealers. So I call possession, those are users. Our manufacturing delivery are dealers. Uh, I told you on the last slide, those were primarily what uniform officers run across in their daily and make arrests. This is what Narcotics Vice does. This is the cases where we're going after the dealers and working our way up and trying to get bigger and bigger dealers and doing all of our type of work. Now, the important thing, I think, to point out here, is because I know this from all of you, many city council tips have come down through us. We get tips all the time. And I know a lot of tips come down through y'all, where you get citizens' call, they're dealing drugs in my neighborhood, they're dealing drugs. And then a month later, you're getting another call saying, the police aren't doing anything. They're still dealing drugs in my neighborhood. This is important, and you can educate your citizens, we do, and I will educate you a little bit. So this number looks like, well, between '23 and '24, we had a lot more dealers. No, this is proactive casework. This is police work that is proactive. And so all this means is we were more successful in '24 at catching drug dealers than we were in '23. It means our investigations produced more results, because this is where we're at. But the important thing for your citizens, when they tell us that, is that, one, if you tell us, if we get a tip through you, I'm going to promise you, that tip is investigated. That tip is investigated to a logical conclusion. And if it is actually a house where they're selling drugs, your citizen will never see us. That's the point. If they see us, we're not doing our job right. The bad guys don't know we're there, the citizens don't know we're there, until we all show up one day en masse and raid the house. And then everybody goes, oh, why didn't they do this a month ago? Well, it took time to get to the raid. Because the law requires we do certain things and have our ducks in a row before a judge will sign a warrant for us, saying that we'll do something. And so I promise you, every tip we get, whether it's online, through Drug Tips, Corpus Christi, through Crime Stoppers, through you, through calls to our office, every one of them are investigated. Some of them turn out, the citizen may think it's a drug dealer, it's not. It may be a house where bad things are going on. It may be somebody who's annoying to the neighborhood, and we'll deal with that another way as the police department, if it's something we deal with. But I'm telling you, if it is drug dealing, you will stay out there long enough. If they don't move, they're going down, because we're going to investigate them. And so that's where you see this number, and why you see it go up, is this is proactive work that Narcotics Vice does. Next. And then lastly, what we got here is the number of cases. So this is everything. So this is the cases we get through patrol. This is cases that we make. And so you see just the different level of cases. Municipal court cases for drugs is drug paraphernalia. It's a class C misdemeanor to have crack pipe, for instance. And so that's what all those cases are. A lot of those are direct filed by patrol. So the only ones that we're going to file out in narcotics is if it comes with a bigger case, if there's a, a lot of other drugs going with it. And so you see the cases that were assigned, and then the cases filed. And quite frankly, numbers will get complicated in what we do because of the way it's counted with the number of drugs versus the number of defendants. And so the numbers get a little confusing here, in why numbers look like they're a little off, but, but they're not. And so multiple cases get divided out. And then we also, our district attorney has a policy that they don't take a case if the drugs are not tested. And DPS has a policy that they do not test misdemeanor-level amounts of drugs. So that's a lot of the reasons why you see differences in the amount of cases what we file, and then our arrests, cases assigned, and then cases filed, is because there's some cases we just can't file, because of the policies of the two agencies that we depend on to file cases with. Now, that is, that really is, that's the big, the big picture, sort of, that's my three slides in covering things. I will be glad to take any questions. If I didn't answer your question, Mayor, I'll certainly be glad to attempt to.
You actually did. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask one more question. I understand there is a bill sitting on the governor's desk regarding vaping. Do we know what the status is of that?
I don't know what the status is of that. The vaping is a little bit confusing as a charge right now, because whether it is a felony or against the law, depends on what's in it. And again, the problem that we have with a lot of this is because if it's, if we have no idea what's in it, or if it's misdemeanor or something that's in it, DPS won't help us. And so what we generally do, the way we work vaping now, from our perspective as Narcotics Vice, is we're going to get a huge batch. And then we, it's easier to get things tested and get help in it. But as far as what the law changed to, I don't know where that's at at this moment.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, just, what's wax?
It's all THC products. They, so THC is an oil, and they put it in wax or edibles. And they'll be dressed up as gummies, candy. They'll look like children's candy. All of it is just, and that's, it's real popular with the youth, in the way they just, their distribution system there and how they take it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Councilman Gump, yes?
I just want to say thank you for, you know, just confirming what you said earlier, because I do, I get calls from residents saying, you know, they're dealing drugs here and there, and the police doesn't do anything. And I'm like, okay. So, so basically, you're saying that you do follow up, but you have your, like, I guess undercover, I don't-
I can, I can tell you this, that we can do things one of two ways. And one way makes people feel better, but doesn't solve the problem. And so you can call me with that problem, and I can get ahold of James over here, and they can send a uniform in to knock on the door and run them off. And we'll run them off, and they're just going to set up somewhere else. But if we do it my way, then we have a much better chance of actually solving the problem.
Okay.
Where we don't just run it to another part of your district, or run it over here to-
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Everett's district, I mean, we actually can try to solve the problem.
Okay. Well, thank you for-
And so, yes, I promise you, every one we get, we look into.
Okay.
Somebody gets assigned to it.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You what?
All right. Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Mr. Zanoni. My name is Austin Yoek. I'm a detective within the gang unit. I also serve on a federal task force with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, also known as the ATF. For those of you who don't know who the ATF is, they basically file firearm crimes within the federal courts. So I'm like a detective, but instead of routing my cases to the DA's office, they go straight to the United States Attorney's Office. Nothing special about it. It's just another way we combat crime, another tool we use in our belt. All right? So today, we're going to be talking about the gang unit. And so the gang unit has been up and running for well over 30 years. And Chief Green is actually one of the original four in there. He doesn't have his mustache anymore, but he is one of the original four. We also have Ringo De Leon, who is still a part of our police department. He's a detective. And Ringo is actually president of a training organization all over the United States, where they offer gang-related training to judges, prosecutors, and law enforcement all over the United States, but it's all based here in Texas. So they always go back and forth between San Antonio and Corpus to host these trainings, where they have well over 1,000 people that attend. And that's a yearly training. They're actually about to start that, I believe, this week. Ringo is also a part of the, the governor's board, where he was appointed by the governor, on his violent task force. So he sits, I guess, on a big, I don't really know what he does, but he goes and he sits, meets with the governor, and they come up with the legislation on how to combat gangs and things that work in our favor, and sometimes things that don't go in our favor. He tells me a lot more, but I don't believe half the things that he says.
[laughing]
So as you can see, as we add officers to our department, it also gives us the ability to add to our specialized units, such as the gang unit. That was a picture, I believe it was last year. So you can see, we've grown in size tremendously. We have both plainclothes people who do not wear a uniform. They're kind of like our undercovers. And we also have those who wear the uniform. Let me go there, just one. So we were called the Jet Team, the Juvenile Enforcement Team. Now we are called the Gang Unit. So the two most important things that we do within the Gang Unit is gather and document gang intelligence. And basically what that is, we want to know who our gang members are, where do they hang out, where do they live, who are they dating, where are their parents at. We want to know everything about them. That way, when a gang-related crime happens, we know where to go. We got the jump on, right? We can beat them to wherever it is they're going to hide out at if they haven't been arrested for that crime. Another thing we do is our enforcement operations, which is going to be disrupting gang activity. So that's going to be saturating any kind of high-crime areas, follow up on prior investigations, even conduct search warrants and arrest warrants. Let me go there. Also have my captains here, Captain Moore, and then my Lieutenant Quayle. They're also a part of our SWAT command. So about half the gang unit is in the SWAT team. So on this slide, something to speak on for working hand-in-hand with federal and local agencies. So right now, our gang unit is a part of about a three-year-long investigation, where we've basically dismantled one of the largest prison gangs in our area. And this is a federal investigation for mainly drug and firearm charges. And as of today, we're up to about a 30-count indictment. So it's all people of rank, all the way down to associates on federal charges. And so our gang unit's role in this is, they knew who our major players were within this gang, as well as who they hang out with, what are some of the local establishments or residences that they like to hang out at. And from there, we've been able to get our indictments, get our arrest warrants, and serve several search warrants. I know several months ago, we served 11 search warrants in one day here pertaining to this prison gang. So we are busy. We stay busy. And we don't put up with gang members who like to claim this city as their territory. You know, if they're claiming something, we're going to put it into that real quick. We got several different divisions within our police department. Our chief and our command staff support our mission. And so if there is any gang-related conduct or activity going on, we're going to put a stop to that real quick. I testify a lot as an expert witness, both in state and federal court. Majority of my cases do go to the federal courts. I've testified in a federal court well over 100 times. So I wear suits a lot to work. We also maintain high visibility in all of our areas of town. So like I said, if there's an area that's seeking some attention, or like, earlier, we were talking about getting Crime Stoppers tips, we'll send the gang unit over there to go monitor it and see if we can get some stops or some proactivity out of there. Let me go there, just one. All right. So gang crimes. Okay, gang crimes is going to be labeled as gang-related conduct within the, the law. And so in order for something to be a gang-related crime, we have to prove that the, it was carried out by the gang on behalf of the gang. And that could be anything from murders, robberies, assaults, kidnappings, even prostitution and gambling. So the two main violations that we see is obviously going to be the drug violations. Gangs like drugs, right, because they can make money off of selling drugs. But one of the more common ones we see is going to be our weapons violations. And the reason being weapons is because guns are a part of the gang culture, right? Gangs love to possess guns, because it facilitates their crimes that they do. They also use it for protection against other gangs, sometimes even against law enforcement. That's where I come in for my job. I work violent crimes within the ATF. So every case that I file revolves around a firearm. So whether people are going and doing armed robberies of businesses, we got people manipulating firearms to where they can shoot faster. We have people with extensive criminal history, violent criminal history, found to be in possession of firearms. Even drug dealers who are using firearms to protect their drug sales, right, whenever they're in the commission of facilitating their drug houses. And as of right now, we're at 100% conviction rate, meaning we have never lost a case that we've sent. So what we're doing is working. It's very effective. I can say the, I say we, because I don't work by myself. I have a team that I do everything with. It's impossible to do this job by yourself. But together, we've put well over 80 people in federal prison. I've been doing this for about five years. So within the last five years, we've put 80 people in federal prison for violent crimes. So it's very effective. The NIBIN team that was started up here in January by Chief Markle, that's also been a very effective unit. The only other thing I have is, we have in the past had gang injunctions, which I believe that's going to be like a city ordinance.
Is that correct, that we do?
Oh, state, state law. And basically, that would prevent gang members from associating together or being in certain parts of town. So if we were to see a ramp up in some kind of gang activity, we would implement some kind of gang injunction. And then also for the leaders of gangs that are out there, and if they're listening, it is illegal for them to supervise, finance, or direct any kind of gang activity. Want to answer the question? I can answer it. Sure?
I just didn't know if council members could get together for gangs also.
Oh, so we're gonna, we're gonna get to that here, here in just a minute.
Dangerous, isn't it?
No, no, no. So let's actually go to the next slide. All right. So, speaking of this, so we're going to talk about the gangs, right? So when you think of a gang, in the law states, a gang is going to be three or more people that have a common sign, symbol, or leadership, right? So when you think about that, right, city employees, right, they all wear the logo, right? You got the police department, where we all wear the same patch. We have a leader. Sports teams, the military, things of that. But on the very last part of that section, it says continuously or regularly associated in criminal activity, right? So when you have three or more people that have a common sign, symbol, or leadership, and- and commonly associated in criminal activity, and criminal activity is going to be what we just talked about, that's how we make somebody a gang, right? So, I can't say just because we're wearing navy, we're going to be a gang, right? We have to be able to articulate and document these crimes that we talked about in the last slide, that they do commit these crimes on a continuing basis, and that's how we're able to say that they are a gang. So, we can't just pick a group of people and say, hey, those people are gang, it's profiling, we can't do that, it's illegal. And one way that we identify our gangs is going to be just clothing, hand signs, tattoos, symbols, even locations of town, like a street, a neighborhood, a business, apartment complex, things of that nature. So, as you see, we have all of our traditional gangs, which would be prison gangs, street gangs, motorcycle gangs, but the one I want to touch on is going to be our hybrid gangs, okay? Hybrid gangs is going to be like a new kind of gang culture, and it's a problem all over the United States, we do have some here, and basically, they're going to be the most active because they have no kind of leadership, no kind of rank, members come and go, and there's times where these guys can combine gangs together and form a bigger set, and then the next day, they're shooting at each other, and then we're working a shooting or a drive-by shooting and trying to figure out why these guys are jumping ship. Hybrid gangs are typically going to be males between the age of, I'd say, 15 to 21, right? So, they're all young males. They love firearms, all of them have firearms, everything from pistols to rifles, they love to display them, love to show them off, and that's when the gang unit comes and pays them a visit, and we find ways to seize those firearms. A lot of the crimes they're involved in is gang-on-gang crime, right, where they go after their, their opposition, or they refer to them as their ops, right, where they target each other, and that could be over drugs, money, and even female associates. The drugs, like what Chief Bowers talked about earlier, they are real big into selling marijuana and the THC products. And just to note, on Friday, we started looking at a house early in the morning, and by 11 o'clock, we were hitting it with a search warrant with the SWAT team, we got three arrests out of it, and we also got several pounds of marijuana and about 500 of the THC carts, as well as several thousand dollars in cash, right? So, that's the gang unit, that's not the narcotics division, so that's other gang unit. That's all I got for that one. Go to the next. We work a lot with narcotics, so we got to give them a hard time. All right, so, this is going to be the total documented numbers of gang members that we have, I compiled this back in May. Now, this number changes almost on a daily basis, right, because people are either being input into the system or taken out of the system. And so, several years ago, we developed a database, and basically, it's a gang resource system, and now, it's used by, I think, seven or eight other agencies throughout the United States. But we basically developed a gang database that inputs into the statewide database. And so, the reason why we have a database is because at the very bottom slide, it says, the law states that because of a city of our size, we shall maintain a database based on gangs within our city. So, it's not because we're picking on them like they say we are, it's because the law states that we have to. Basically, the way gangs work is it's going to be off of a point system, right? So, like I said earlier, if, if we were navy, that's not enough to say that somebody is a gang member, okay? It works off of a point system, some things, like the only two that would immediately make you a gang member is if you're in some kind of a court proceeding and a judge or a jury finds you, finds evidence that you're a gang member, or if you self-admit, like while you take the stand and say, yes, I'm a gamer of this gang, that's the only time that that one thing would be labeling you as a gang member. Other than that, it works off of a point system. So, some of the things that we would use, like when we're around the field, is going to be interviewing somebody and then telling us that they're a gang member, like whether it's a traffic stop, a call for service, maybe somebody's wearing some type of clothing or tattoos, like I said before, hanging out in a certain apartment complex or street, or even associating with other gang members. So, we have to compile several things together, there's about 11 or 12 different ones, and we have to compile them like a point system, and once they meet X amount of points, then they're input into the system as a gang member. So, we can't just pick somebody and say, hey, you're a gang member, we have to have the right amount of points and qualifiers in order for them to be listed as a gang member. Now, I said we were taking people out of the system, so there is a five-year period where if people don't meet any of the qualifiers within a five-year period, they get removed from the system, okay? So, just because you get put in, input into the system doesn't mean that you're going to stay in the system forever. That's a wrap.
Thank you. We have a few questions here, Councilwoman Camps.
I just had one. Graffiti, it looks like it's actually gone down.
So, it's down, it is kind of coming back a little bit, but the graffiti nowadays is going to be things posted on the internet.
Oh, really?
YouTube, social media, things of that nature, yeah, everything is on the internet. You want to know about somebody, the internet.
So, now, it's just gone to social media and not physical?
Yes, correct. Every now and then, you'll get, you'll get some tagging here and there.
Yeah.
But as far as gang-related, people are claiming neighborhoods are disrespecting the, their oppositions, that's, it's more on, online now.
All right, because I don't, I mean, knock on wood, I don't see it, you know, like I used to, so...
Let's keep it that way.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, you had mentioned you do work with the ATF, and I'm pretty sure that through the process here, you acquire firearms and collect them. What do you do with those firearms?
So, they get input as evidence. If they are stolen firearms, we return them back to the owner, if not, we judicially seize them and they get destroyed. Yes, through destruction. So, they, basically, it gets the asset forfeiture through the Department of Justice, they, basically, it's a part of the indictment where these items from the crime get seized and forfeited over to the government.
So, when you say crime, are you referring to a violent crime or just possession crime?
It could be either or.
So, if you have a high-dollar firearm, you destroy it as opposed to possibly make revenue from it?
We can't, yeah, we can't, we can't sell, there are some where we can use it as a, like an administrative forfeiture where we could use it at the police department for something, but it would have to be for like a law enforcement use.
No, no, I'm like, you know, you collect a, a collectible firearm that is in possession from a, I mean, you destroy that firearm?
Yeah, the adjudication of the case comes with a destruction order, and we destroy the firearm. No, we do not sell criminal firearms back to the public. Just as Todd, as Todd explained, when we get a gun used in a crime, our NIBIN unit researches the history of it, and what I don't want to see, and I hope I never see, is that this gun that used to kill somebody's wife was once owned by the CCPD and sold back to the public. We don't sell guns back to the public, we destroy them. If your gun is taken, we get it back to you. If a criminal's gun is taken and we get it back that after adjudication with a destruction order, we destroy the gun. We don't part it out, we don't sell the parts.
Well, I understand your, your point of view, you know, I'm not gonna...
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna mince words over like a Glock 15 or, sorry, Glock 9.
No, I understand where you're coming, there are, there are high-dollar guns.
I'm talking about a high dollar.
Sure, sure, but those are very rare, and to my knowledge, I, I think we've destroyed a couple high-dollar guns maybe in the past, but, but if they're used in a crime and they come with a destruction order, they're getting destroyed.
Okay, I understand, if it's in violent crime, but I get it, but if you just collect, somebody shows up to somebody's house and they have a bunch of weapons lying around, they shouldn't...
If they're a convicted felon and they have possession of a gun, then they're a criminal with a gun, that's a gun used in a crime.
Okay, so, I get it, I think there's probably some leeway there, but I get, I get it, I get what your, what your concerns are, but I think you're also losing a revenue opportunity for your...
There's a, you know, you may get a few hundred bucks for a gun, maybe even a few thousand bucks, but in my opinion, we're not going to roll the dice with that gun going back to the public and being used again in a crime, because there is a recidivism rate for weapons that are recycled into the community. We have guns that are stolen, we lose 200-plus guns a year in vehicles, we catch them routinely used in crimes. So, we don't, we're not in the business of recirculating guns, I get you. If you're a good person, Councilwoman Vaughn, you get your gun stolen, we get that gun back, it's going back to you. We don't keep good people's guns.
So, how do you get those guns back to people?
We notify them, we have recovered their gun and it's at the...
How do you notify them?
Through letter, through call, I'm not sure.
Usually a phone call from where they, they call and report their firearm stolen.
Yeah, if it's reported stolen, yeah.
So, it's a phone call, okay.
Yeah. Our property room...
And what's, what's your return rate?
I have no idea, I can, we can find out.
Okay. Also, I did, I noticed you didn't mention any white-collar crimes. There was no statistics on white-collar crimes, embezzlement, none, any of that?
No, no, we don't, we have a white-collar crime investigative unit, but are you talking about as it pertains to firearm possession?
No, 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 I'm just, sorry.
Pass the firearms.
So, we're done with firearms. We can, we have numbers, yeah, we have a white-collar unit, a great unit, they do great work, we can speak to that, we, we came back answering the questions that were given to us by council for follow-up.
Okay. Just maybe some statistics on that, anybody?
So, we were using the FBI numbers to be able to compare to other cities, that, that would probably be embezzlement, under theft, under larceny, it's not a separate crime to compare, it falls under that category. But like Chief said, I mean, we have a really good financial crimes unit, if that's something that you would like to have an update on, we can give you that.
Okay.
Local data.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Scott.
I do have to, first of all, Chief, thank you. Thank you to all the men and women that are part of your team, the Scott family thanks you. Corpus Christi is a better place for your service, thank you so much. I am a little disappointed that you didn't bring samples of the drugs, because on our last term, John Houston shows up with potpourri, that was the big thing, kids were smoking, and so, he brings us five bags we could touch and feel, and I so badly wanted to hide one because they went through the council and then ended up with the city secretary, and he went over and picked them up, and I thought, what would he think in that minute when he went to pick up the five bags and there are only four, which means one of the council members was stealing his drugs, and I didn't do it because I'm chicken, I just, and I wouldn't do it today. Thank you again, I just want to say thanks, I, I don't have any questions, I appreciate what you guys do, and Chief, I think you're a fantastic leader, and thank you.
Just to touch on the synthetic, so, within the last year, I had a case that I worked with our narcotics division where we raided two houses, we basically eliminated one of the main synthetic dealers here in our city, we got over seven pounds of synthetic within the residence.
Wow, that's awesome. Councilwoman Vaughn.
Chief Markle, thank you for not selling weapons back to the public. That shows a lot of integrity and honesty, and there is no price on that. I appreciate the fact that you have that mentality not to do it. I don't care how much you would get money on it, you don't do that, thank you. Austin, are you the famous one that's married to Priscilla?
I am.
You're a lucky man, she's one of my favorite people, and I would say, she texted me a while ago, you better go home in a really good mood.
I am, I am.
Because you've made jokes here, and she's, she's making notes, I'll tell you.
I got a bunch of gym equipment delivered while I was here, so, she, she signed for me, so...
She gets that, okay. You did a really good presentation, all of you gentlemen did. How many different gangs do you think are in Corpus Christi?
I would say maybe about 50.
That many?
And a lot of them are going to be our hybrid gangs, only because they're smaller groups and they jump from gang to gang so many times.
And are you seeing a lot of our young people getting involved in that in the schools? Or you have any...
There are, there are some involvement in schools, and we have a gang officer who's, who's tied in with CCISD, who's briefing weekly with them on gang trends that are within CCISD and some of the other schools, so, that's Officer Raymond Jones, he's very good at what he does, and he stays on top of these hybrid gangs and stuff, so, yeah, they're, they're doing what they can to help out within the school system.
What about the surrounding areas? I'm not going to name any cities, but are, do you think any of our gangs are coming within our city from the surrounding areas and mixing with our gangs?
Yeah, so, we do have, there are prison gangs, basically where they have like subsets on our surrounding cities, and there are times where they come into our city or transfer to, or don't, not transfer, but travel to another city, like, we had a case probably like three weeks ago where some of our gang members here locally committed a violent assault in central Texas, and we worked with the department in central Texas, basically obtaining three search warrants and arrest warrants here, and we executed them and were able to get what we needed, as well as the arrests of those individuals. So, just because we have gang members here doesn't mean that they don't travel to other cities to commit crimes and vice versa, we do have gang members that come to our city and also commit crimes.
And when the border was open for so long, and we had so many illegals coming in, do you think that was an uptake? Did it affect anything here?
As far as the gangs...
You didn't see it?
No, that'd be more of like the drug angle, and like the gang members participating in, in the, the drug sales or like the moving of the drugs, things of that nature.
To me, sometimes they're just intertwined, I don't know, but anyway. And ICE, do y'all support ICE if they were to come into the city? I'm sure the answer is yes. Is that a loaded question? I hope not.
Yes.
It's an important question.
Yeah, well, we don't, you know, immigration's not our business, right?
No.
But of course, we, we support law enforcement across the board. If they're looking for, if they're looking for, well, what we care about are catching criminals, we don't care where they come from, right? So, if we catch a criminal and they're from Corpus Christi, they go to jail, if we catch a criminal that's from Venezuela, they go to jail. So, that, that's really where we stand, it's not, it's not part of our operational objective,